Are we live?
Trying to get you a nice.
Everybody, we're live?
We're live.
We're live, but we're not called to order yet.
It's 6:01.
This meeting has been called to order with the Public Meeting Act. Notice that this meeting was provided to The Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and Highland Park Planet on March 16, 2023, and was posted on the Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. By exit or to my right and left of council chambers, please speak into the microphone if you come up to speak. As mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the meeting. If the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided by each participant for public comments or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting, is repetitive and thus is not on topic, that is relevant to the borough governing body.
Noria, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to provide the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation from under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Councilmember Hirsch.
Oh, Council President Hirsch. Councilwoman Kim Cho-hun?
Here.
Councilman Postolnik?
Postolnik, yeah, here.
Um, Borough Administrator Hovere?
Here.
At the end of the workshop, if you have any questions, you may wish to speak at the public. Public may wish to speak. So we can go into our workshop now. Now we move into our budget workshop. And I am going to start off with Tara. Or Tara, you want to give us a quick overview?
If you don't mind.
Yes, give us a quick overview. At the end, then I could go around. I did a round robin.
And I just want to, you all heard Noria's rendering of the pledge, but I just want to make sure everybody knows Noria Champion's our CFO, recently appointed. So it's our first budget meeting, so be nice. Um, but she's ready and, um, and it's excited that she's able to join us here. So essentially, what I was hoping to cover just real briefly before we get into everybody's, any questions or anybody's specific, you know, areas of their own buckets that they wanted to kind of reinforce. We put together, I have, you all got a memo, and I did give additional copies here, as well as the summary sheets and the detailed budget worksheets that kind of flow into that. So you all have had that. I heard from a couple people with some specific questions, so I'm not, I wasn't planning on going into the weeds on any one particular area outside of what you guys want to talk about. But as a general summary and one update I wanted to share was, um, as, as if I could just, I'm just going to kind of jump right into the summary page on the municipal budget worksheet, where we're comparing 22 to 23 across all the areas, municipal, library, school, county, you name it, and kind of how the outlook plays out with the scenario. The assumption in this was that schools were at 2% and county was at 2%. Schools are at 3%. I just got an update literally at the end of the week last Friday. So I did run a quick update. I didn't want to, I can, I can give you the comparisons. It's not a tremendous impact on the total bottom line as I go through this, but I did want to make that, make you aware. And I believe the mayor received a notice from Superintendent Nicosia about it, and we have the ability to follow up. I do know they did discuss it in their meeting, I believe, last night. I will confess to having not watched said meeting yet, so I will make sure to do that and take note of any. I do know there's some areas around, they did get additional state aid this year, which is great. Um, but I also know there are additional expenses, especially coming around with the preschool mandates and things like that. So I, I don't know exactly where all the changes were in their budget at this point, but we can certainly, while we can request that information, I don't know how much more other than for.
Do we have any idea how much state aid, additional state aid they have?
I know it was 34% more than the last time, but I don't know what that dollar value of that is because I don't know what their state aid ones were before. I just have to look at their budget.
But it was a 34% increase in state funding that.
That they received, yes, correct.
I believe it's over a million dollars. Yeah, ballpark.
Yeah. So, um, it is. Yeah, so that's, that's, I fully confess, so they had sent us their estimates and then the, the, it turns out the formula was, the way she broke it down for me, it was a mistake. So I, I wasn't going to make an amendment, and then she writes me an email, oops, there was a mistake in what I sent you, which made sense because I couldn't figure out, I read Christina's email that it was 3%, and then the number she gave me didn't add up, and now I know it was a mistake. So, um, but just looking at the one I've already sent and the one you have in front of you, um, essentially, and the big thing that really stands out in this year over last year is the tremendous increase in total assessed value. Um, and that's due to the revow, which we all knew. We all knew we were low because that's why we were ordered to go get a revow was they, we were at basically 40% of what we thought market value for our assessment. So that's why we went through that exercise. So it does make it hard to kind of perfectly compare because, you know, the totals are sort of different, but you can see here, um, you know, kind of how it shakes out. Um, the, the kind of the total bottom line, which we usually jump to in the beginning of these conversations, is, you know, what is the impact on the average residential assessment in town? And when you compare 22 to 23, and these are for single-family typically taxpayers, um, the total average assessment, you know, went from 145,966 to 479,990, which comported very closely to my experience with my own, you know, revow. Um, and while we did see a significant increase in appropriations this year because of the revow and because of how that basically redistributes things more fairly, the average impact to the typical average residential assessment when you compare 22 to 23, the 2022 bill and this total bill number at the bottom, 12,440,24, now the average bill is 11,618,75. So that the typical, the impact on, the difference is 821 on a typical assessment. So it's not going to be exactly 821 difference on every tax bill, but in general, you will see those go down. So I did do a quick calculation before the meeting with the new state numbers. And so just comparing that difference number at the 3% versus the 2%, which is what I had assumed, the difference is $752.42 versus 821. So that just gives you an order of magnitude. And I'll redistribute that sheet. I just, I wanted to double check it before I made a bunch of copies. So in a way, you know, that's not to say we're still raising amounts to be raised by taxes. You know, that's, that is going up this year in all the areas, including the schools and including the borough due to a lot of the things which we'll go into in our memo and into some of our discussions. But the way it all redistributed this year, uh, hopefully fairly, and that's what the process of revow is intended to do, um, the impact of the average taxpayer should be an overall decrease in the amount to be paid. Uh, so just to let that color your opinion of this budget as we, as we go forward. Um, so I'll stop there. Do you have any questions about that? Okay.
Is there any possibility, because we know what the percentage was, almost 35% of the school received, that they might recalculate and come back to us with a lower number?
No, they had taken that into the consideration.
Oh, that was a part because.
That, that includes their, so.
You didn't say that in the many emails that you received.
Okay, so no, as I understand it, the budget numbers we, they presented last night and the ones that they sent us in advance include that additional state aid. So we can certainly request a special meeting if you want to get a better handle on that. I thought an easy thing to do would just be watch her presentation first to just get our head around it. I didn't get a chance to do that before tonight and to get my head in this game first. Um, so we can certainly have a follow-up conversation. However, um, I don't know that we have any teeth other than if we think there's an area they need to reconsider, we can certainly voice that concern, but, you know.
I was just.
Yeah, so that's, that state aid number was baked into their budget proposal, so.
I actually really would like to have a memo or a conversation with the schools because if the state aid went 35% and they're going above a 2% normal 3% increase, I imagine there's a lot of expenses that they have.
I'm assuming they absorbed a fairly sizable health insurance bump like we did, other things like that. But we can certainly, they must have had to, she might even be able to send us their slides, which would break it very.
That would be helpful to us.
Happy to request that.
I also believe there's a increase in added district placements for special ed, and that costs quite a bit.
So I'm sure she's had to break it down.
Right, whatever, however she break it down would be helpful to figure.
It would be a nice purpose if you shared, if you shared with us.
Sure. I'm sure she was getting that ready for her meeting and now it's a lot easier to just, just like I did today.
Sure, yeah.
They can get us that. So, um, I'm assuming there's PowerPoint slides and all that stuff, so we'll, we'll get that. And certainly can follow up with any specific questions that we might have. Awesome. Um, so any other questions on this kind of top sheet before we kind of go into the next level of detail?
Just we're still waiting to hear back from the county and what their.
Yeah, they, in past years, they've given me more of a preview. Last year, the CFO was kind of like, they don't want me to do that. I don't know exactly where they are in their, they're usually a little ahead of us with their budget, so it's probably any day now. I will say they typically don't go much more than 2%. Like, that's not been our experience, but, you know, they had expense increases with, I don't know if they self-insure or what with health insurance. So, um, I'll reach back out to the CFO of Miran and remind me, uh, we can do that together and see if there's any numbers they're willing to share. Last year, he said, no, not until I introduce it or whatever, I forget exactly. He said it very nicely, but.
Their assessment went down.
Huh?
Last year, their assessment was lower than the current.
Yeah.
I doubt this is going to be the case this year.
Yeah, so, and I'm assuming they're experiencing similar, you know, statutory increases. Um, so, but I'll, I'll double check on, uh, county too. Now I can say the council has requested.
Yes. But the top line is that the average taxpayer is going to see a bill of $750 less this year than they did last year.
That's the good news.
That's the good news. I mean, it is a tough budget year. Um, but we have some good things working in our favor right now that we can, you know, we're, we're starting, uh, as we can migrate into kind of the revenues and the expenses a little bit.
It still is less than that example that went out. It would be less, like, they were going off those, our current numbers from PPA, that example that was there.
No.
Because they went off our current budget.
I don't know when you say that, I'm really not sure who you're talking about.
PPA, remember we got it and everyone said, yay, my taxes are going down, but they only went off.
They were basing it on the 2022 budget.
Yes, the 2020, yeah, our current number.
That's a diff, that was just for illustrative purposes only. But again, similar, you know, not.
Yeah, maybe like a 800 or something.
Similar endpoint, it's consistent with what residents received in the mail. This is a real budget as opposed to the 2022 budget again. Um, and so we have some, some increases that we didn't have last time.
Why everyone need to apply for their anchor benefit?
Sagan, um.
That's why everybody need to apply for their anchor benefit.
Yes, that's for sure. Uh, you mentioned the anchor benefit program as well. So, um, but yes, so we have, uh, lost my, 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 there. Uh, so, so to, to your point, Stephanie, yes, it's not the exact number because also those were your actual values as opposed to, this is the average residential assessment, which is the number we use to compare year to year so that we have some base.
What was personal?
It's the best we can do. Exactly. So, so some things that are, you know, we are utilizing a little more surplus in this budget to try to kind of cushion that blow, so to speak, a little bit. Um, but we feel we can do that pretty comfortably because we did regenerate and we're, we're sitting in a pretty good position, uh, to do that. So we want to do that, but we don't want to overstretch because that's also something the bond rating agencies look at and things like they want to see you kind of maintaining. And I know this is something Stephanie and we went through when we did that bond issue. Um, that's one of those things, there's no hard and fast rule, but just having kind of a consistent surplus that you have and regenerate is a good thing. We do think we can pull down a little more than last year because we had some reimbursements from FEMA and some other things that made our regeneration a little stronger than would have been in a normal year. But just be advised, we probably will not have that going into next year. So that's why we're going to probably end at a lower point, but at a healthy point in 2023. Did I get that right, Noria?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the, the revenues are based on, basically the rule from there is you shouldn't be anticipating more than you got in the prior year because the state, when they look at it, they'll question you left ways and sideways. Sometimes we go a little conservative because we, we might have had a little better year, but we're not feeling really confident that that's emblematic of a trend of going up. So we'll maybe hedge in between. But in general, you're anticipating in terms of revenues what you believe based on your past experience you can reasonably expect to collect. One of the things that I know might be on everybody's mind is what about the cannabis licensing? That, we're in a kind of a weird year because if you recall, applications went out. Last year, we collected money for those applications, but they're now just getting established with their state licensing. So I don't think we can reasonably, even if all five of our applications succeed with the state, they may not be really renewing until next year based on how long, I don't know how long that's all going to take, and we're going to have to think about the renewal cycle a little bit. Similarly, once they're up and running and that revenue, whatever it ends up looking like, comes in from a 2% and all that stuff, until we have a track record on sales and things, we're not going to be able to anticipate that revenue in a real way until we. So I just want to put that out there because I know it's even come up in conversations when, when in contract negotiations, like, you're going to get all that cannabis money, so you can pay us more money. And I say, well, eventually, hopefully, you're right. But right now, we can anticipate these revenues the way they are here. So I just wanted to make those general points. Um, we did see some increases in court, just to point out those things. They're trending up, the tickets are up, and the violations and fees and all that stuff are trending up. So we show that here, although we're not, we're not projecting future, you know, escalation, but I don't see that slowing down anytime.
And that was like most of campaigns that we did. It isn't like.
It's bad, and I think COVID. I think COVID, we, it was already on a downward trajectory and then, psh, so.
But they did like a lot of them.
Distracted, driving and.
It's not like, I don't want people to think like we're like.
And I do think there was just a little bit of a hesitancy on enforcement during the pandemic and things like that.
Yeah.
Enforcement is in place now.
Yeah, so, so that's just an area where we just, you can't predict it, but we can see the trends and it's at least trending, it's, it's upward, but it's not where it used to be yet, you know, just to be real. Like, this is more of a recovery than it is, you know, anything else.
Just to be, just to be clear on that, like, during the pandemic, people weren't pulling up to people's car and, and writing tickets for obvious reasons. It's a pandemic, so, you know, most of the time they, they get a warning at a distance, so they was, try to cut out contact as much as possible. So now it's, it's going back to doing your job, so to speak, and you're, you're doing less on one side what you're doing, you're going back to your regular functioning as, as an officer and doing that job. So it's not like we're out here just going, hey, let's write a whole bunch of tickets. That's not the case, just to be very, very clear.
And so one other thing I wanted to point out, and it did come up in a question prior, was the grants. And just keep in mind, there are grants we get every year, I'm trying to give you a good example, where we may not have gotten, we don't get the green light until after the budget's adopted. And the way we handle those, it'll remember, and this is more much for Jason, I think, we do those Chapter 159 resolutions, which basically inserts that into the budget so you can use it. So anything we can get confirmed prior to introduction will get jammed right in here. And we did, I think, we may have picked up one, I think, since I did this. Um, but one of the big differences, it's still a big difference, we use some of our American Rescue Plan Act funds for, I believe, the Woodridge Avenue road improvements. And so that was 500,000 there. We still have some of those, and I'll be coming back to you guys with a proposal for some capital projects. So that was kind of a one, one-off, and we'll have a few more of those one-offs in this budget, but I'm not prepared for that, for this introduction, just so you understand. Um, so that's just a lot of those, I'm trying to think, most of these grants, some will come, some will go, but like CDBGI, although we did get the word on that one. So, uh, so for example, CDBG, I think we do have it now and that'll be in there. Uh, so certain ones, I, I am not concerned about any of our usual grants this year. But then there is like the microgrid one. Well, that didn't happen this year. And that's, that's a bigger project and, you know, so there's, some of these are one-offs and they're not renewed every year. And we'll be exploring new opportunities where we see them. So, um, I can put together kind of a better summary of, I just, we can't for the budget do it, but I can certainly present a better outlook for you guys as to where I think the grants would be this year.
That would be great.
We just put in for that SAFER grant for firefighters. If we get that, that'll be a Chapter 159 in the budget that we can. So that's, it's not to say if we don't know it now, there's no grant. It's just some of them, it's the best information we had at the time of the budget. Um, I think.
There's going to be a lot, I mean, there's going to be a lot of money after, true, I mean, after that big funding will be, I think that's going to be options where we may hold them.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, you know, we experimented with a grant writer for the SAFER grant, and we're going to be looking at those things. But again, I, you know, I don't want you to be dismayed when you see down by $500,000 in grants. It's because mainly that American Rescue Plan one. And that's, that was kind of a one-off thing. So, um, that's kind of, those are the main highlights I just, I think we're going to, was going to touch on. Does anybody have any questions on avenues that I maybe didn't cover? And then we can jump into the approps where we get into more bucket type discussions.
Oh, I have a question. Um, just, just because you mentioned the grant writing, I'm curious if there's possibly money available to hire someone part-time on some kind of like basis.
Well, I, what I'll tell you, you know, for grant writing, what I'll tell you, so these grant writers, there's a lot of like these, it's, it would probably be hard to keep somebody busy on a part-time basis, but certainly a consultant basis. Um, and that's what.
And a shared service basis.
Or a shared service. I will caution you all. There's a limited capacity of the number of projects that the staff can implement. So we can, you know, so we have to think also realistically. Capital projects, 100%. You know, we'll, we'll roll those out as we get the money. But, you know, if there are kind of new fangled ideas, I'm not saying I'm not supportive, but then we might have to find a person not only to write the grant, but to do the project. So if it doesn't fit neatly into any of our, so that's one of those things because Em and I are hitting the limits of, I've got the River Trail, I've got this, and we're dividing the NPP, and these are all great things.
That's going to be a part of a later conversation.
But that's a later, so I, I think it's a really good thought. And if anybody knows of a town, because I love the shared idea, who has a good grant writer, but a lot of the times it's, it's not as much the grant as the, either the idea or the who's going to do it, um, you know, without it. Uh, so I just, I think these are all, you know, I want to snag as much money as we can responsibly because we also want to have a track record of following through as what we say we're going to do.
And then I was told over and over and over and over again how long these grants are, even although we're sharing services one town for the grant writer, it consumes a lot of time.
It's still work for staff. I mean, we just work with the SAFER grant people.
Right.
Do you think they just figured it out? There was an email to me and Emma, I need these answers, I need, I need background. Now, they did the flowery essay, which was great. That was, I mean, I would definitely say we liked the experience, so. But, but the nice thing about that grant, if we get it, it's for hiring someone, for two people. That's an easy implement.
That's it.
You know, that's nice and easy. You know, we're building capacity and then maybe those people can write some grants.
May I, um, I, I just want to, I want what Terry just said. Thank you, Terry. I think I agree 1,000% with you on that. Um, I think, I think Emma has really, you know, exhibited some real depth in, in, in changes on a lot of these things. And also overseeing our implementation, um, I just wanted to second the fact that it's capacity we need to, uh.
And we have some ideas for that. So it's not like I'm saying, oh, no, this is, so therefore shut you down. No, I have no new grants. But, um, I just want to make that point because, you know, that's, we're kind of up to a limit. You know, you know, I'm more and more saying in my emails to, you know, boards and commissions, I'm like, if you want to go for that grant, great, but you got to do the grant. You know what I mean? Like, it's got to be your project and we'll help you, you know? So, but I definitely think there's a, for some of these more onerous FEMA-ish type grants that are just a pain in the butt to put together, there's a real possibility for a grant writer either as a consultant on an ad hoc basis or as a shared, you know, I'm, I'm open, but I want to know what the quality is there.
I'm not touching these millennial as their.
I love, I'll talk to the BA there, Melissa, and say who their person is over there. I'd like to talk to them. Because I wouldn't mind our next grant trying a different one, just see how it goes.
Because we use one for this one.
They're pretty happy with millennials, so.
Oh, that's who they use as a consultant?
There's a group called Millennium. They do Millennium Strategies or something. I'm familiar, they're one of the big ones. We, this one, we went with CGP and H just because we kind of knew them from other projects and they were able to commit to doing it quick because we only have a big, we need time. But there are other fish in the sea and I think it's, and there may be ones that are better for public safety grants and some that are better for touchy-feely grants over here. You know what I mean? Like, and that's something we can learn as we go.
We don't, we don't need to talk, we don't need to talk about who.
Okay. About who?
About who?
Huh? What is that?
It's not a group.
Oh. Okay.
We don't talk about the individual companies right now, you said.
Ah, gotcha. That's a fair point. So, yeah, I think we're all, um, the, so that, any other thoughts on the revenue side of the equation?
Uh, revenue?
I just reminder, like, you know, the revenues and grants, it's like offsets usually independent expenditures beyond, you know. We're lucky that Kim and Community Services has grants that actually offset salaries of existing staff. But by and large, these grants, they're in, they're out. You know, they're not really helping with the general operations. They do because they do things for our town, but, you know, certain ones really do, like the CDBG, we offset some transportation driver and all that kind of stuff. So I beat them up dead.
Yes.
Are we still losing money on people registering their cats?
What?
I'm not prepared to answer that question. That's probably a clerk's office question which I could follow with you on.
What's the question? Are we still losing money on having an ordinance where people are supposed to register their cats?
I'm sure, I could look into that for you. I'd give that to you though. Doesn't that go in that where all the license, marriage, and all that, like vital, doesn't that go?
It doesn't go into vital, definitely.
There, it goes under, Noria, you know, which of these revenue.
Can you make a note on that and follow up on that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think there's a line item in here, should be here.
It's probably in either, yeah, these imperments or.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Imperments, and that isn't.
Yes. So we'll get back to you on that one. I just, we didn't look at that this year. Um, we can maybe do a look back. Um, so into appropriations, these are gathered in terms of the general bucket areas of your own areas of responsibility. And Elsie, I'll defer to you how you want to go through this.
I think we should go through the ones that, let me just run through everything. I was going to say the ones that we've had the biggest increase in.
Well, I have my little annotations on the side that the basis, basically the basis of a memo I sent. I tried to basically follow this in order. So if you were looking at my memo and looking at the summary page, you could kind of see where the highlights were. And what I, what I would encourage you, you got to look at two columns, budget change in dollars. Okay, that's second to last column, but then percentage. And you got to kind of juggle the two. So they're both interesting for their own reasons. So sometimes it looks like this huge percent change, but it's like $3,000. So it's, it might be important when it's a board or a commission, but in the scheme of, you know, public works, it's a drop in the bucket.
Or animal control, that's the one I really wanted to go through.
Right, so we could, you know, administration, we could start with that. A lot of the big ones in, in that bucket, and those are you and me, and I'm probably the best prepared to speak to some of those.
Yeah, so let's start with admin.
Um, so the biggest highlights there are legal. Uh, that's basically gearing up for trial on JSM v Highland Park. Um, more or less, that's what that plus, any other weirdness that comes our way, which, you know, Votian v Highland Park, you know, we have these things that happen and they happen more increasingly, so we've got to be, have enough budget to land on those. Um, the, sorry, I should have brought my ruler. Libraries up, and maybe I'll defer to Phil to kind of speak to some of that. The initial request was much higher. Um, I did do some editing based on how much was actually expended in prior years, but also taking into consideration, I know they're finally up to full staffing versus I know we had done a kind of a COVID-level staffing period. So the, I didn't want to slice too deep, but Phil can maybe speak to that one separately. So, so, so do you want me to kind of finish the other one and then we can kind of come back to libraries?
All right, so. Okay, okay, alright, so we'll, okay.
'Cause I know I can kinda suck the air out of them. And then we can maybe go double back on those areas. The, uh, liability insurance is up sixteen percent. I declared it the year of, uh, risk management, you may not be aware of this, but that's why you have to do those trainings. And by the way, you have about a week and a half to get them done for the ones due at the end of the month. So please, please, if you did yours, thank you.
No, that one.
No, there is online, oh no.
No, 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 there's several that you have to do.
I will have, I will resend it out.
Please, no, because it helps to, to, to help with all of this.
It is like the discrimination and all of the-
Yes, harassment, discrimination, cybersecurity, all that stuff.
That's why I kept on saying to Matt, please remind the council members.
I handed in all my things, I completed them.
No, but every time you complete one, there's another one that comes.
No, these are the same trainings, but if you want, I'll, I'll tell you who still does one. Yeah.
Yeah, that would help.
Yeah, I thought it was just one. Yeah, we did that one.
No, but it's not just one.
There was like six of them.
It was mistaken, it's not just one.
I'll get an update, no big deal, you have plenty of time in a twenty-minute internship.
No, we, 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 we'll, we'll, we'll-
Yeah, 'cause I didn't even mean to take us down that road, I apologize. Uh, the, uh, the, the, the reality is, we have increased costs. Our numbers across several areas were not favorable, and so some of the things we can do are trainings and things to, to show the JIF, we're taking it seriously, and they will take our, our performance on these trainings into advise, when they look at our new premium for next year, but the premiums are up and we had, and, and that is the bottom line, that's where that number, we are in a three-year, we're in year two of a three-year, so we didn't have the option shop. This is just one of those things. Uh, so we're gonna work really hard this year to improve our performance, we have a lot of protocols, our employee safety meetings are much more robust, we're, we're really doubling down as staff, but I want you to know that this was a major unexpected increase. Um, and we worked, we worked hard because they were trying to really change our deductibles, and we were able to kinda negotiate that down, back down, but that was something that was gonna really hurt, especially for workers' comp and some of these other things. Um, so that's something that is so ongoing, but it was a major increase this year, sixteen thousand plus. Uh, the group insurance, which is the health insurance primarily, it also includes the line for I and, uh, whatever else, uh, I?
Eye and dental.
Eye and dental, but, but dental was up by about four percent, but it's a drop in the bucket compared to what we paid for the health insurance premiums. So this number, this increase, uh, is twelve point six percent. Note that the actual increase was closer to twenty-four percent, but we had some cushion in that line from previous years that we were able to kinda run our numbers and, and buffer this a little bit. We won't have that moving forward. That, so this number, um, is basically, uh, basically us absorbing that major premium increase from the state health benefits plan program. Uh, the last item I flagged, not to say there's not other interesting things, is PFRS, that's the Pension Program for Police and Fire. Uh, the, the statutory amount, they, you know, the bill went up, uh, by a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's just, there's nothing I can do about that. Uh, so that is what it is. So those were kind of in the min bucket, the big ones. Uh, there, you know, you can see, you know, social security is up a little bit, but that's in part due to some of the salary and wage contractual stuff, so that has to dial up as salaries go up. Um, but, you know, dollar value is tremendous in the big scheme of the budget. Um, so that's all I had on admin, Elsie, if you wanted to say anything else, or?
I just need for everyone to take those classes, we need, whatever percentage that we can come down with the JIF, it's critically important that we, we get there, and it's a protection for all of us as well.
It, it does also make us, you know, easier to defend in the case that we are seen for something. Um, but that's, I mean, I don't wanna give you any illusion, we all take the training and that number goes down by fifty thousand dollars.
No, but it's gonna help, every little, every, if we could get down to a couple of percentage, it's gonna help.
Yeah.
So strongly encourage everyone to take it and just redo it, resend, because if you did one before, we're telling you to get to the class already, so you don't have to redo it. 'Cause I, I took all of them.
I was sending around more of these, I should've thanked you.
Matt, I'll get you what you need, you're on the wall.
I could do so much better.
You're welcome.
It does give you, you have a kind of a boomy voice in this speakerphone, and you should know.
Yeah.
It gives you a bra-avy taste.
You sound like Angel drunk.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
This is not the salary in this year.
I am coming to get you.
I should've tried that in my franchise, I should've, should've. Uh, so any other, should we jump into finance?
No, just anybody else, anybody else have any questions on this? On the admin portion, alright, yeah, we just, we should jump into finance.
Finance is pretty straightforward, um, the only, the major increase that only, and I only hesitate to use the word major, there's a, we're in a transition year on finance between Lori and Noria being here, so for the time being, we still have Lori as our Director of Finance and Noria now as our CFO, Lori's gonna stick around for a little while to help us through the budget period, uh, but is more and more kind of transitioning to Noria, so what we've got is basically a half a year of Lori roughly. I will probably, I've also budgeted, 'cause she's our QPA, our qualified purchasing agent, which we don't wanna lose, so that's, we'll probably keep her, our ties into her at least through the end of the year until we figure out an alternative for that. So that's, that's why it's not like, oh, you jacked up everybody, we, we had some promotions, and we have also Lori still on board. So, that's just what's going on there, that's the main highlight in that, uh, area.
And then, and then is that, the, for the revow, is there finance too?
But that was- In a way, but where you see the cost of that is under deferred charges.
Yeah.
Uh, that's in the green area after boards and commissions, you'll see that on page five of the packet you have, there's, uh, you're up by eighty thousand under deferred charges. The fourteen we were paying a year for five years was for the master plant. Now we're gonna be paying eighty thousand dollars for, I believe, five years, for the revow. So we're taking the hit this year, now next year it won't feel so bad, but, you know, in terms of the percentages, it's, it's a big one that we knew we were gonna have to assume in order to apply with this order. So that's, that's an important point, yeah. So that's not in the finance, it's finance related, but it's one of those, like, it's kind of its own thing in the budget, so I kinda call it out separately.
Anything specific that you wanna jump in?
Um, no, I think it was mostly that, and then the bond principal stuff is there.
That's, that's basically what, that's the debt payments.
Yeah.
Debt payment.
Yeah, those, those sections are, uh, just, anyway, towards the bottom of page five, capital, interest, and debt.
That's totally not due yet.
Yeah, but that's in her bucket.
But that's in, yeah, in finance.
I didn't think about that, I could've maybe moved them up, I kept them segregated more for how the budget document flows. But, yeah, the, you'll see bond principles up, but the, um, there's, um, bond interest payments are down, and so is the MTL, they're really down, so that whole area is more or less a wash.
Are we putting in here this year for like a revow maintenance program or something?
Not this year, but that'll be something, we, we don't need it this year because we have, we're, we have, and we have the, as we go through any tax appeals or anything like that, the PPA's still on the hook as part of their contract that we've already bought.
Oh, that's, okay.
That's, they're there to kinda represent and work with us through any appeals that come through, um, and then, but Tom is gonna have a proposal for us for a maintenance program, starting probably next year, winter after, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, that's good.
So I'll, I'll have more information on that later. So that's the finance bucket, economic development and planning. Uh, what's in here is essentially, uh, normal, pretty much situation normal. Slight increase in the leave for, uh, economic development, which will help us with how infrastructure in the Main Street contribution, and maybe Matt can speak to that later about what we're thinking there, um, because we already need to introduce the Main Street budget in parallel with our budget, so that basically when we're all adopted, we can get our tax rate certified and get our bills out the door. So that'll kinda pull it.
I can talk about that anytime.
Yeah, but it's, I, I defer to you guys, I think maybe, you know.
Do you wanna share it in?
I, whatever you, if you want to.
Or do you wanna get through it and?
You wanna go, let's go through it, or you, which way are you comfortable, which way's still fresh in your head?
I can do either way, why don't we go through the regular?
I, I, I think we're-
No, we'll go through this and then we'll come back to you.
Uh, that, there's not, the only other thing I'd highlight on here, you'll see some changes in salary and wages between, uh, planning board and board of adjustment and code enforcement. And if you recall, we hired Tanya Varela, who's now been doing the planning and zoning board clerking with Jen's tutelage. Uh, and that was something Jen did as kind of a separate title previously, and just, instead of having to charge it to three different accounts, we just decided have code enforcement's budget, we're just charging code enforcement and we reduced planning and zoning by the same amount. So we're no longer charging any of time to salary to those lines and just charging to code, because it just seemed like more mechanics than was, was really appropriate. But it's, in essence, it's, it's no difference in terms of total salary and wages, if anything, it might be a little less based on, you know, final salary negotiations.
Terry, the only thing I would, um, maybe just explain real quickly is what the economic development OE is, that, the one thirty-eight.
What, what goes into that, sure. Uh, essentially, that's what we charge, you know, the salary and wages is basically my redevelopment, so I can, basically that's me. And then the OE is, uh, I charge, so, you asked a bigger question, probably wanted, but, uh, the essentially redevelopment-related planning services that aren't charged to our capital ordinance that we already have, some of the things we're doing are eligible for that, some aren't, so certainly what's in there are finishing up the Cleveland Ave and Upper Raritan plans, because that was actually out of the twenty twenty-one budget, and we can no longer charge the twenty twenty-one budget, so I'm working on getting LRK to give me an updated proposal to basically finish those out, I put in basically the difference between what we already paid and what was remaining. It may go up a little bit, 'cause their salaries may have gone up a little, but essentially, um, those kinds of projects, the contribution that we make annually to Main Street, which Matt can talk more in the past, it's been twenty-five thousand, we're contemplating an increase in that, uh, so those are, those, we don't always expend it, but in the past things we've talked about were kind of PR kit, something like that, and that's something we could certainly look at. But essentially, this is to support our economic development activities, the professionals essentially, that, and like, uh, if we needed another parking study, that would be something we could charge through this budget, you know, those are, so I'd like to have a little extra, 'cause each year we're not, we're, we're not sure exactly this expertise we might need, but that's essentially what we're using it for.
Yeah, I just thought it was important, people knew that that's just the, the professional side of getting economic development taught comes out of the OE primarily, and that comes from hiring LRK and planners and folks.
And you can see, I think in my sheet there, it's kinda says these are the kinds of stuff.
If you go into the detailed budget, it breaks it down.
Yeah, and they're just estimates, it's not like a hard press, it's this many dollars for that. And each of those projects, unless it's general, like Joe Baumann in general, uh, you know, the Upper Raritan, Cleveland Ave, those would be resolutions, you would, we would, you would basically award those contracts, and then we booked that purchase order against that line, so you'll have a chance to weigh in on how we spend those dollars as the year goes through.
Why the hell, why do we control increase ten thousand dollars?
That's why I wanna, wanna get to that.
Uh, so that-
And that's a share, right?
It's a shared service with Edison.
Yes.
Uh, I asked the same question, Scott's kinda the point person on that, it's under his bucket, and it's because they basically woke up and smelled the coffee that they've been lowballing us for a long time, so.
Everybody else is more tense.
We don't have another option.
But there's like a whole bunch of towns that, that are in that shared service, it's not just us and them.
Right, I don't, if you wanna push back on it, we can, but let me tell you, we don't, I, I'm on my manager's list, sir. Towns are desperate looking for shared, it is hard to cover, like, are we gonna, who else has a?
We had New Brunswick, they'd be there.
Has a, a hospital, like, or what do you call it, the shelter, like, that's the, so it kinda happens a little bit.
Yeah.
They have the, you know, you know.
If, if the mayor wants to call the mayor and have a discussion.
Well, that's how I wanna talk to them about grant writing, maybe a ten thousand dollars.
We had a conversation, like, uh.
Ten thousand dollars.
But I will say, we're pretty busy, Mike, I talked to Scott, it's not like we don't get, they don't get calls.
Yeah.
And, and I, and we don't have a lot.
Yeah.
We're just not much, because we left New Brunswick a long time ago.
So, other than just a hissy fit, I'm not sure we can go about it.
You remember that?
We switched from New Brunswick because we weren't getting service for a lot of money. And Edison made a mistake and lowballed us, and they never-
'Cause they wanted the contract.
They wanted the contract to say we have Highland Park, and they thought we were gonna do a lot of deer management, which would bring in money for them, and that, and that never materialized, and they did finally wake up, 'cause they increased one or two hundred pounds as well.
They're trying to make this, I think, a money maker though, 'cause they have a lot of time.
Can I tell you though?
They're financing a, an animal shelter.
Towns don't want to shared services to lose money, you know, they gotta cover their costs, that's part of the advantage. And we all get, like with the IT, hopefully, we all get a better service that we would've otherwise gotten without each other.
They also expanded their shelter, um, and it's a, it's expensive.
And they have more facilities than, you know, they have a lot, more capability than the other towns around us, yes. Because they're being held at a higher standards now, so it's not like we're just-
So they just said, like, oh, increase whatever.
They sent us a new bill, that is the center of the conversation, and that is it. So if, if that's something that's important to Elsie, I would think it's-
Take it or leave it.
I don't even know what to say.
They don't look at the eighty-five percent, look at the number.
New Brunswick, that's still, that's the one.
At the block party on your street, they came for a parakeet or something.
They did, they did during the block.
And they came, I know, my neighborhood, we had possums running all over, and they came and they got all of them. You know, they sent the truck, they came back, they picked them up.
We have a stump problem.
And they would, no.
Uh, along South Second and Johnson Bar, they dropped a truck off in my front yard, and that's the only time we ever saw.
This guy, they, they actually came out several times and collected them and did what they do, and that was it. So, but if you guys want me to go back to them, because when I saw the increase, I thought it was like, whoa, ten thousand dollars, and I thought that that might not be the best way to use my time to argue with them for something that,
Pick your battles.
Every day you see on the news, these shelters who are getting in trouble, we are not there. Look at what happened in Woodbridge and a bunch of other towns around the state about animals being abused, and we have a service that that is not the issue, I don't think we need to go argue with them about that.
I agree.
Me too.
We need Edison for a lot more of them.
And that's what I say, I, I, I first my, I have like five other topics to talk about first.
Yeah, I know.
Stormwater, like fill our project, and like that.
I wanna use the crap filler to spend, extend our little-
You wanna use the crap one?
Asphalt, asphalt.
Asphalt.
Oh, okay.
They have the, they have the equipment, so does East Brunswick, but there's-
So, anywho.
So they have equipment, I don't know, you have, they have equipment that you would like to use for our town?
We have to pay them to do it.
Yeah, we have to pay them, but it's really, you know, and-
We talked to Piscataway, not Piscataway, East Brunswick, and the problem is, it's hard to get them to give you a number, 'cause you can't just say, okay, whatever you wanna charge us, we'll do, and they are short-staffed too.
They are.
So they may not be able to deploy your-
One of the problems, we're gonna use two of their crew who are licensed to operate, but it's still worth it when you look at the amount of time saved in paving.
So that's a better conversation for you to have with Edison Mayor now.
Agreed.
So I would, that's the conversation I'd be willing to have with Sam.
Agreed.
Okay. So just send me some notes, so.
Um, yeah, I just took a note. I'm writing pick battle.
Exactly.
Public safety's next, if we're going back to the economic development and planning, you know, and there. Police salary and wages is kind of the highlight on that, it's five point seven percent up. Keep in mind, they have a fairly aggressive salary guide, um, this number also assumes some negotiations that I'm still in the middle of, uh, for incentivizing some of the newer officers to stick around. Those of you who have been doing the interviewing for the new officers, it's, we're having, some of them have been bad fit, so it's not, not a loss, but I've been hearing from the chief, I know Elsie and Phil have been hearing from the chief and from just senior staff members over there, it's, it's exhausting, we get all these people on board and then we lose them to somebody, so this is supposed to help. I can't say it's gonna be a perfect solution, but at least there's the folks who've got a reason to stay.
It will give us at least three years, and it'll give us over that three-year period.
So it's a very strong proposal that's built into here, um, but that's, it's a combination of, there would've been more than a two percent there anyway based on how those guys work, but it's even more because of some of the things we're trying to do in this contract. So that's not settled yet, but I wanted to make sure I could at least afford what I was trying to put together, and so this is what that number looks like.
Just to add to that, that's critical because- Just to add to that, that's critical because my entire time at public safety is that we bring them in.
We train them.
And we train them. And as soon as they're ready, you know, here comes another town that's offering 50,000 dollars more. Or somebody goes to the academy and we have our people up there and they're, they're gone. And let me be very clear. Minority officers are top pickings for everybody. And so when, when it comes to, when you have people trained and ready and they have experience, it's like Highland Park is a training ground. And we lose our minority officers when people come in with 50, 60,000 dollars more. We all have, they have young families and they're trying to buy houses and take care of their families and they're going to go that route. So I want to be very clear because I've had conversations with people saying, how come we don't have any minority officers? We are a small town. We have a small budget and we have to work within the budget that we have. And if I'm a, if I'm a young person starting a family, somebody offered me to 50, 60,000 dollars more, bye.
And I will say in this number, in addition to this, the chief has worked really hard with our labor attorney on some, when we do hire, some clauses about if you accept this offer, you're withdrawing your name for consideration, things like that. I know some of the, you know, the hiring committee folks know about. But we're trying, because it's, it's, I mean, the amount of, forget about our time interviewing, you know, 30 minutes here and there, onboarding, background checks, you know, field training, all that stuff. And then flush a year and a half later, you know? And so we're trying to be responsibly aggressive here. It's not, I don't think we're giving away the farm. I think we're now very competitive in our area. But you're still going to want to have to work in a town like Highland Park. And, you know, we can't, I can't make somebody who wants to go in a fast-paced, more fast-paced environment than here. But we think this is a good. So the chatroom is not closed on that negotiation, but I at least wanted to make sure as I was in negotiations, I could even deliver upon what I think is, I think probably our best bet right now, you know?
The reality is that we have to find a way to attract tenants.
We do, we have to.
And to keep them for a little bit over at three years, you know?
Officers have, are kind of in the earlier stages and kind of gives them a little bit of a boost and a feeling like they want to stay. It just kind of.
In, in talking to them on the street, even in the middle of the night, I try to make an effort and they're. One of the things that is keeping them around is the good attitude in upper management to make this a more community-oriented, to orient more towards giving them extra trainings, which is like, you know, it's an extract to them. But in the budget numbers, still, it's bottom loading, it's bottom loading a lot to make that, you know, those early steps more, you know, more beneficial to a new officer.
Absolutely.
But what we're getting a lot of is officers who are already in another department or in corrections somewhere. A lot of them are corrections officers. Let's show you how bad it was. We had one round of three good candidates scheduled for interview. They all, within 24 hours of the interview, accepted other jobs, literally.
Well, they take our offer and throw it in another place's face.
Of course they do that, which is one of the reasons why I would say you withdraw off of anybody else if we make you the offer. But we've interviewed, I think, 10 officers for three positions since January. That's, that's how tough it is.
Yeah, there's more to come.
27, we have three more.
Yeah. This is to fill the.
To fill the, infill the gap. Yeah, and, and we could talk about it more, but that large number also represents infill for, request for additional officers. But we'll talk.
There's no new.
I, I know, it's, it's listed, it's listed in.
No, I basically, I talked to the chief. I said, there's no way we can add to your table of organization, meaning additional and do these contracts. And so he said, I'll happily take the, if you can make that contract, that'll be very good for the department.
Yeah, I spoke to him, I was going to bring that. I spoke to, we had a meeting on budget and he said, hmm, what there is, is that it's infill and then because of the upward movement because of the retirement at the upper level, we're downfilling the positions.
Um.
And that saves us a lot.
Yeah, but somebody else is going to get the 10 positions. I, 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 I know, so. But.
It's a challenge.
It's a challenge, but that's the big headline. The other one I just would mention, I mentioned earlier, we went after that SAFER grant for salary and wages for fire. We will know, I think, Emma told me August, but I'm, don't quote me on that. But the, it's kind of a hedge number. I didn't want to be caught flat-footed without the ability to do some additional hiring this year. Either some combination of an additional full-time or potentially a full-time and a part-time director. And so it's a little bit of a hedge, like something we would do towards the end of the year. So I didn't budget a full year of that. My hope is we get the SAFER grant and then we can regroup and figure out exactly how. And just to be clear, the SAFER grant is more for a firefighter, not a manager. So we could then relook at our budget in light of if we do get the SAFER grant, then maybe we could get manager. Because we, I do think, and this is not a new recommendation, we do need that person. It's just finding that person isn't easy. And what I do think we need more than anything first is bodies responding to fires, you know, people on duty. So that's what this budget's meant to do. But I will, I'm going to not quickly do that. I want to wait and see how this fit for grant pans out. But then if that doesn't go through, I think we're going to have to go ahead and hire another full-time, at least this year. So that's the 4.4% in under fire. I didn't have anything else I was going to speak to under public safety, Phil, unless you have any thoughts.
No.
Uh, Reckoner, oh, sorry. Reckoner, is Kim Scottado under control? This is her, that, this is one of those ones. I told Jason he was lucky when he inherited his bucket because it's in good hands.
Yes.
What I'd remind you is there's a whole other recreational trust fund that basically what we collect fees and things, that money goes into that pot of money. So some of our expenditures, a lot, the majority of our expenditures for programs and things are charged there. We do charge some day-to-day stuff and salaries and wages to municipal budget. So that's something Jason, I've already talked to Kim about getting a handle on that bigger picture and kind of bringing it in. But we do track income and expenses on both sides. But this is just our operating municipal budget amounts to be raised for tax purposes. But that's, it is a bigger story to tell in terms of, you know, where the money goes to pay for these various things. And Kim has done a great job with, once again, securing some for the aging side of things, grant funding to offset a number of the salaries. So if you look at those shapes, you'll see that reflected.
Terry, I know we did a slight increase when I first, because when I had this bucket, that was a while ago.
In what, sorry?
And, and just like some of the programs.
We did another tinker, I think.
In the food section.
In this, in this year.
Oh, we did.
It was a minor tinker again, and I should report it. There was no, she said there's been absolutely not a peep about it.
Yeah, because we're still.
We're still very low compared to our neighborhood. We didn't touch our discounted for free and reduced families and special, and needs-based families. So we didn't tinker with that pricing. We really just focused on regular fees.
This, this year or last year?
I think we did it in January.
Oh, okay. So that's real, okay, yeah.
I'm not 100% sure, but I know we, I know Matt, I think we talked about that, if memory serves. But it was, it's so minor, it was not a.
Yeah.
It was a massage. It was not a major overhaul. But she is going to.
I can, I'm sorry, I can answer your questions, I'm not as good as in my area, but it's pretty good though.
Go back to your 2022 sheets. I'm going to go right here.
Yeah, you can kind of look at that.
But that's not, that's not on here, right?
Just take a look at the increases that happened there.
But this is sound, yeah.
But that with the rec fees wouldn't be reflected in here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. They're whatever they collect and stuff.
But we're, we're, we're supporting more or less this all the salaries. Are we now in the way of out of the municipal budget, not many rec?
Yeah.
Not a lot of money. In the past, we had to hit the rec fees a little more to offset salaries, but we're trying to have that money available to support programming and paying vendors to provide the programming and stuff like that. So that's just something that's ongoing. And Jason, I'm.
Yeah, I have to say that, no, I'm sorry. Some, some of those are.
It's quite all right, not so much. Please go ahead. You can go first.
But it's a pretty uneventful, 1% and 2% down the line there. So we're not talking about anything very challenging. And the only reason the, there's no teen center OE, we do charge, we have a trust account for teen center that we've been utilizing for that as well. It's within, it's a kind of a subset of that rec trust that was put aside for teen, before the teen center was up and running. But we've been very frugal about that and we've been milking it. But the day will come when that's gone. And that's the other reason we want to build the rec trust back up so that we have it to offset all the programs included in the teen center.
I didn't have any questions. I mean, it all looks.
It's pretty, this was a pretty uneventful year for your bucket, fortunately.
Yeah.
And then even the salary and wages from, see, some of that is picked up by the C V D. Yeah. Some of that, yeah, some of that salary.
I don't even think I included that year because it wasn't confirmed at the time. But, but yeah, so that we do have some, we are being creative about the, it's, it's great now that really the teen center with Kim's new role, which isn't even do anymore. Everybody's still thinking of doing the new role as the director. And Ashton reporting to her, it's kind of, she's being creative with grants and things like that and trying to figure out how to support those programs beyond whatever Ashton's already been doing.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add is that, just to echo the praise to him, because I had a long sit-down with her just a week ago and went over all of the programming that's already been with her.
It's my goal, isn't it?
It's, it's, I was going to say, like, super impressive.
She's awesome.
So, yeah. Easy job for me, of course.
Okay.
Looks good.
Do you think? Um, let's see, Public Works.
That's the big one.
It's a big budget. The main changes that I'd highlight, there's a slight uptick on salary and wages, which there, again, the salary guides in the, the, when you're in the steps in the salary guide for the, these are union positions, are more than 2% very often. So you can't just go, why are you more than 2%? Because that's the negotiated thing. I will also say, we had been trying to hire a position for a long time there. And so we finally did towards the end of the year. So if you looked at the actuals and were like, why didn't we spend it all? It was a hire, we were trying to hire. So now we have. So this is what we need to run existing positions that we've already approved. So that's, there's no, we had approved an additional hire last year. So that's not in this budget. The other big change, building around OE. We are on a new custodial contract. We're still ironing out the kinks. It does cost us more, but we really didn't have a better alternative. And we're going to work really hard to make sure it performs better than the previous. We are having some, it's just started as of March, so give us a little time to get it under control. But we're working on implementing the contract. The other things, we just know we have some building upgrades we're going to need to take on in some of our buildings. And I just wanted, didn't want to, like the DVW bathrooms, things like that.
Our bath, all the bathrooms.
Well, don't get excited, Elsie, that's not in here.
All the bathrooms they want.
So that's, no, but we are going to try to get them a more deep clean and some things to get them a little spittier. I do, we have a dream to do over the ones over at the community center, but that would be a capital project. This is more maintenance and catch-up because we're just seeing those costs going up anyway. Writing's on the wall there.
I think the custodial, like, contract, I think at one time we were doing something for schools, right?
We were. They broke off their agreement with Italian. I don't know what they're doing now. They went out to bid. They asked us if we wanted in and I'll tell you, we, it was not tenable to stay. We were getting, it was a really tough position to be in. This is one of those, the good and the bad of shared arrangements. So it was their contract, but we were just like this thing at the bottom, like you have to do these buildings too. And I had no way to really advocate other than going to the school and complaining, complaining, and complaining. So we ended up getting a little bit of a credit on kind of the last year of the non-results we were getting. But when they asked us if we went, and this is something I did talk with Gail about, it was before Elsie's time as mayor, I was like, Gail, we can't stay in this. It's not working, it's not going to even save us money in the future. And they're advocating our terms, like now we're having problems and it's our contract and we're going to walk if we don't like what we're getting. They wanted us to leave. We were a problem for them. And so we made the decision, we went with Access is, I'm spelled weird, Access is N J, which is a state contract agency. They work with special needs folks throughout, they've got really great recommendations. We're having some challenges with the team we have here now, but we think we're going to resolve them. And we're just meeting on it today. That's only a small part of that number. I don't want to say our custodial went up 70 grand. I think it was closer to 35 grand.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
The other stuff in there is basically hedging, again, some updates that we need to do on some of our buildings and some of our other matters. The other, the truth is, things like we still own 101 Raritan. It looks like an eyesore, so we're going to paint it. You know, same, stuff like that that's in there. It's not big bucks, but it all starts to add up. And I wanted to make sure we had enough because if we're going to start talking about property payments downtown, well, guess what? We have to maintain our own property. So that's on my mind as well. So those are amongst the things that are in that increase there. And then the other thing is motor pool. We have old vehicles and you're going to be hearing from me when we talk capital. The problem right now with vehicles, you can't get. So even if you gave me the money to buy the vehicles, we have money sitting there from an allocation a couple of years ago. And we can't, we can't get a pickup truck for DVW. And we're not alone. This is a major problem in a lot of the town. But essentially, our motor pool costs and our fire engine in January alone was like, we had almost 20,000 if my memory is correct, just to keep it propped up. Memory is not it because that's kind of, so I was freaking out a little. I was like, I better jack up Mike's number by another 40 just to make sure we have enough to keep our fleet going until we can maybe get that cushion of money or whatever it's going to be to help offset some of these, these, these expenses. Because a lot of our bigger equipment is now 20 to 30 years old. Our garbage truck as well.
One fire engine and one garbage truck.
Oh, the garbage truck?
Wish it would break in half and.
Not the one arm, but we need a back. A rear loader, a new rear loader, which we use for recycling and other things.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so we, they get old and those are not.
And they get constantly used.
So this is to keep them up and running. Capital was where we would talk about replacement. So this is kind of a hedge on what I see as a trend working against us. And we have a plan for doing head-on routine replacements, but unfortunately, police vehicles and, and public works vehicles are, and the big towns get them first.
Same problem with the towns too.
So maybe we talk to Edison about how do we go along to one of their purchases. That would be nice to talk about and ask. I don't know how you work that, but I would love to talk about that.
You can set up a meeting.
Just have, have them ask for 10.
Take it from buying, promise to buy for two of them.
We pay, we pay for two.
Because they, they get noticed when, hey, we've got vehicles. Like, by the time we call, they're like, yeah, they're not. Emma was just the one, because they ordered it.
That's exactly.
So that's, those are the main areas there.
That's a shared service opportunity with that.
Yeah, potentially. I don't know exactly how to do it, but I think that's one.
We can have the conversation.
Emma was just saying, can't we just work with it?
We got to, we should have that, yeah.
That's a great, great one.
On the top of it, too.
Yes, so.
So make it, okay, fleet, yeah, okay.
Um, the, any other thoughts on public works, either on that?
Matt?
Uh, Hersh, sorry, I should be more specific.
Hersh, any, um, some friends?
Nothing really beyond what, nothing really, thank you. Nothing really beyond, um, preparing the dialogue or anything, there's a million of them. Uh, still sorting, like, I'm just, uh, you know, happy to answer questions or, you know, Phil, if you want to, if you want to, you know, to.
Uh, no, I think that, you know, the, the high points, you know, we hit.
And everybody's favorite topic.
Boards and commissions.
I'm all, let's drop it in the bucket here, although you probably should go back to library and Main Street at some point, but.
No, I, I wrote it down. I wrote it down.
Okay, good. I didn't wanna forget that.
No, I didn't. That's why I wanted was to insert it while we were on those topics, but.
Because I do wanna talk about the board and commissions.
Yeah, so boards and commissions, I will tell you right now, I made no edits to what was proposed by the boards and commissions in their request this year.
The favorites.
I didn't make it a priority because I had bigger fish.
What?
But, but Stephanie, this is one of those fish to fry. You gotta factor that, like, when you look at how big these asks are. The biggest one, and Jason can speak to it, is the arts commission.
Always, always.
I will give this to the arts commission, because Elsie and I did talk about this. They did spend their money last year and they did a lot of good programs.
Yeah.
And they continue to do a lot of good programs.
And, and so the reason I said, you know what, I'm not gonna pitch a fit on this. I've got, look at all these other problems I've got in the budget.
Better than being used.
And Elsie agreed and Jason, I guess, I'll, I know you had a moving about that, so, and Hersh, you can weigh in. But that was the, you know, in the past, I would've been saying, no way, they never spend it.
They spend everything.
Now, will they spend this?
And they spend it well. They spend it well.
It remains to be seen, you know?
We see the work, that the body of work that they have done and what they have created, I, I'm a strong advocate that, that they have this money.
And the one thing I'll add to you is they've learned a lot about how our purchasing works. Before, they would get so hung up that they couldn't spend the money.
Right.
They now know the deal. They've got so much better, haven't they?
They followed through with the process.
And they talk to us first before they promise things to the vendors and it's not perfect, but I will say it's light years better. John has really learned a lot, I will say, on that front.
Mayor, may I, may I, I want to too.
Sure. Yes.
The art commission has, uh, telling us this morning that the art commission has identified, um, if existing entities who actually fundraise on its own. Um, and that's a really exciting proposition, uh, for them, to, to, to do and get out there and generate interest and contribute donations.
Yeah, we do have a, a, a trust for arts-related donations, already a previously approved one by the state. So we have to make sure it's all done properly, but yes, if they're willing to put the energy in that, we can support it.
And, and what, but what's their, like, big ticket item? Because I know that one year I had them, they did the Band-Aid bench, that would probably absorb like half of this project. So they, is it like a big?
Jason, do you have a proposal?
They usually put like a.
I can, I have it in here if I can just.
I don't have it on.
Windows of understanding is one of their big things.
They also use, they also were helpful in getting the, the.
Oh, yeah, the.
The sidewalk thing, the sidewalk thing.
The stormwater.
No, no, the drawings on the, the, of going up these avenues with the drawings, the curb cut drawings.
Would you like me to give you the flavor?
Just like, um, big, big ticket item.
Oh, I, I just had, I, yeah, I just have their budget proposal, but if you have some.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Oh, go ahead, Price. You have it.
Okay, um, well, so, so, so what they identified, um, uh, uh, of existing projects that they, you know, really love about that, you know, and not that they don't.
What actually?
They live in understanding, this fifteen hundred, uh, they grew a lot of art cards, which is a nice, nice, successful, thousand, uh, some of the good elevens. Um, oh, the H P, uh, Harry and Tubman T-shirts, which they can sell, um, so, so, so that you can, that you can, that's what I'm saying. Uh, and so, yeah, but, I mean, projects ranging from five hundred to fifteen hundred, basically.
They're doable. It's not like I'm gonna do a Harriet Tubman statue. And I know you have it figured that out.
I like the community cookbook.
Not that I don't like the idea, but I'm just saying, you gotta plan that. You can't just build a statue in a year.
The community cookbook is on there.
The community cookbook. I love that idea.
Me too. Yeah, yeah, they have that.
See, so see.
No, they, they have.
But they're all kind of projects.
But they've evolved. They have evolved since your time.
We're not gonna create a huge installation. I hope they get to that point, but we'll get grants to do that.
Okay.
This is to support really initiatives of the group.
Yeah, yeah, smaller projects that they're doing over time. Because when I did have them, they had that huge, you know, they had like statues and stuff. That was what they were doing.
Right. Well, they took, they took big chunks of stuff. Now they're doing smaller pockets that, that's mainly, that they can maintain and move on as.
Yeah, they had the sculpture project they wanted to do. They had like themes, so that's why I wanted to know.
And then they fundraise and then they can start to amass the money.
It's a different art commission now.
Yeah.
Okay, please fair.
Their focus is different.
You know, in the past, I've been equally skeptical. This was the first time I'm like, you know what?
Remember, when you were working, I didn't even wanna give them money for the Band-Aid bench.
Yeah, you guys, right. That's why I'm sitting here like, are you guys, are this the same people I'm talking to?
Yeah, but those people have evolved and they show their work and they're doing their jobs and we're seeing the results of that, so absolutely wanna support them. But if you look at other boards and commission, it's, they've decreased.
The only other two that went up were Shain Tree and they've been incredibly active and this is just, you know, all the grant work and all this other stuff.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, I can't tell you what exactly that two hundred is going toward, but it's, it's well spent. And then sustainable, the only reason that's up so much is we were previously charging adopt a drain program expenses and other things related to the storm water to our storm water line, and it just makes it a lot easier for finance if all of sustainables goes in to their account. So that's just, just know, that's not new money that they didn't ever have before. That's money we've worked through a different line previously. This is more just putting it all in one place so they know when sustainable puts in requests, Naraya and the team know where it goes.
What about, um, Board of Health? Because they didn't use, they didn't use that.
Like I said, I made no changes. I didn't, I didn't down, I didn't up.
The reason they didn't use a lot of their money is they were able to get donations for a lot of the stuff that they were giving out. Um, but the people that they got those donations from no longer work at those companies, so now they're gonna have to buy the stuff that they give out.
Like what kind of stuff they give out?
Um, like they did, um, the condom program at the high school. They, every year at the, um, Fourth of July, um, they give out stuff for mosquitoes, um, information and the.
Ducks and all those things?
Yeah.
The what?
Mosquito ducks. They're like, you put them in the standing water and it helps.
And they give, they give out like the, you know, spray and stuff like that. They, they, but they were able to get a lot of donations, but those donations have dried up, so now they're gonna have to actually buy those things. But that's why they were able to stay on your budget.
Yeah, okay, but they asked what you said.
Are they still doing the health clinic every once in a while or no? Kim did, is doing something over.
I know, Kim is doing that. I was just wondering if they still.
But most of the people on the Board of Health are involved in it.
Okay.
Like Norma is doing a lot at it.
And human relations too. Do they submit? Because they only use two thousand, what, two hundred?
I honestly don't even remember, Naraya, I don't even remember if they submitted or I just gave it a say.
Well, well, Tara can speak to that.
Yeah.
They didn't submit. They forgot to submit.
Are they planning on doing anything that they're gonna be funded for?
It's a board in progress.
So I think, I don't know, that, uh.
I mean, I guess, Stephanie, if we cut them back or not, I don't know that it makes a big difference to them.
Because we could still at the end of the year.
We can use it to transfer elsewhere if they don't spend it, so.
And for universal access, they actually were supposed to use two thousand, but unfortunately, um, there was a mistake with the paperwork and it didn't make it to our last meeting, so.
They're gonna spend it this year?
They're going to spend it this year, yes. But they, they were supposed to, they did have another thousand spent. We just didn't get the purchase order taken care of in time.
Price, you had a question? No?
No, ma'am, I got your side. No, no, thank you.
The, so I guess that, we already kind of, I briefly ran through the situation with grants and when we were on the revenue side of things. So I think you have the gist there. And the capital improvement and debt service, those numbers, I mean, the capital improvement fund, we could do more, we could do less. We've been just kind of holding steady at a hundred and Laurie and Naraya thought that made sense, just to kind of continue that practice. Um, that builds up basically the money that we can use to fund borrowing of capital. Or we can charge smaller projects to that by ordinance through, through actions. Like when we did a fence one time, we charged the capital improvement fund and we needed an ordinance and that's how we did it. So that's, that's, that's pretty much the rest is the money we've already committed to owing and we're paying. So.
Paying there it is.
Um, so that's kind of where it all tallies up. Um, the.
I would just, I would just like to go back before we go deeper in the weeds and just go back to library.
Now, I was planning to get back out of the weeds, but anyway, I don't know what you wanna do.
Um, Phil, library?
Oh, yeah.
Um, on the library, um, the ask was a bit more. Terry, uh, did, did cut that.
I did take some liberties there, just because I was like, there's no way I can cooperate. I, it's gonna kill me.
Yeah, you know, if you, if you, if you look at the library budget, uh, now, now understand, you know, the library is, is funded a little bit oddly because, you know, statutory mandate is a third of a mil, which is based upon the overall assessed value, so, uh, and then, and the borough contributes, doesn't necessarily match fifty percent, but the borough contributes a lot of that.
And just to be clear, the statutory amount is on your first page in your, your sheet. The, um, that five twenty-eight, two oh one fifty is the one that we don't have. Anything we do it is based on our assessed value. And the state cranks out those numbers and tells us to be all, and then anything over and above that is the discretion. And historically, you guys have come, if not double, more than double, like, that, you know, that has been the trend. Uh, and Phil, I just point out, you know, if you look at, I don't know, everybody doesn't have your breakout sheet, but on page fifteen of the worksheet, if you have it, it's the sheet that Phil's probably.
I have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you can see we were holding pretty flat for a number of years. Some of you may recall those discussions. So this is the first year where, um, a pretty sizable bump, uh, is it, it's less than requested, but more than previous is being entered.
Yeah, one of, one of the infills was, um, hiring of, 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 like, our in full-time staff to bring staffing back up. Uh, there's an increase in the executive director's salary, uh, was rising over a couple of years. Um, they account for the, the bigger bumps. There's more expense in O E because we went to the L M X sys, system, which is electronics. Uh, correct, we had a long conversation about upgrading electronics from people who really understand electronics. Can I use that facetiously? Um, but with the upgrades that we had to do with that, also the re-entry into live library as opposed to pandemic library, increased expenses, uh, with more people working, uh, the overtime elements, not substantial, but all of these increases came about.
And they too have contractual, you know, the majority of the staff are union employees and they have contractual.
Right, so, you know, they're, they're looking at the raises on the C B A, uh, Terry did, uh, cut it rather substantially.
But the other thing is, it can be between O E or salary and we, like, that's just, I did a number in, on page fifteen, which was just like, I kind of backed into it.
Which is one one.
I just, just because I was like, I gotta hack it down and it's not my place to say where. And the way, the reason I came to that number, just to be clear, was I took a look at actuals with Naraya and Laurie's help to look at where they were and really how much looked to be left in the end of the year. And it was probably around thirty, if I'm not mistaken. And just to be clear, when there's a surplus or not, I guess, an unexpended amount of appropriation, unlike our other areas of our budget where we can move it from one place to the other, that, that could get banked by the library in a capital book. You know, they have the ability to do that. Um, I, I'm probably, I, I probably shouldn't say anymore because it's probably about the extent of my understanding of how it works.
Well, I mean, but.
But, but just my point being, I just wanna justify the number. I looked at where their salaries were. I looked at that. And that was kind of what, my first crack at it. So, you know, anybody wanting to quibble either from the library side or the council side, there's plenty of room for discussion. I just needed to get that number. Because the way the rest of the numbers were coming in, you know, it seemed like a big jump to me.
It's not a sizable jump of the roughly seventy thousand dollar increase that remain, but, um, there was never any money for training and program. Um, so it was a large request to start doing that, um, but we felt that we needed to do something. Again, we incentivize employees to make a better working environment, to get a better service. And the li, the li, library over the last year, especially under, under Kate, really undertook some significant, uh, community outreach projects. They had a table with farmer's market. They put in a miniature Spanish library for rural children in a laundry net, which is a fabulous idea. So, uh, the initial num, the initial number was.
I balked, so I took some liberties with permission of Elsie, but.
Took a little, but it's the first time they have it in the budget, so they do have something for that.
It's five point four over fire, as after being held flat for a number of years. The one thing, and we had talked about this earlier, that there may be some disruption at the library due to the construction. So there may be some savings, there may be some savings in part-time staff, you know, but I don't know.
Yeah, and I think that what we're going to find is a lot of wash going on here. You have two big things that are going to happen. Without talking about what's gonna happen with staff or anything like that. We have the state library grant, which we're matching, which is about nine hundred and change. That has changed a bit because of the costs have risen so substantially. You know, recall, this is almost three years old now. We lost in the first round, we got the second round, and even then there were already, uh, you know, cost increases. That's one project. It's gonna disrupt the library and a lot of things we're talking about, like buildings and grounds, they're going to be repairing that. So I'm gonna leave that tab open, says to what we're going to be fixing with the grant made to restrooms where we don't have to.
One thing I should mention, we are gonna be doing the H V A C, uh, the one that's broken, and that's another buildings and ground. I know we're taking that on.
Exactly. The other thing is, the potential of the Pushman grant also has some buildings and grounds aspects to it as well as some other stuff. So I think this is a big open tab and I think, um, the enthusiasm among the board and the employees is really high. It's going, you know, Terry and I were talking the other day and saying, oh my God, we could get a really pretty library.
It's gonna be nice.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a while. I think it's gonna be eighteen months before it all comes together, it's reassembled and starts to re-operate again. So we wanna keep that in mind in this budget. I think we're gonna see a radical difference, uh, even by the end of the year. Uh, we do have to have some conversations about that, I think, more appropriate than possibly in the secondary schedule.
Yes.
You know, because we have, we have the bid openings on Thursday at eleven. I think in thirty days after that, we'll know what we need to discuss.
Absolutely. Do you think this, I mean, I don't know if you floated this back, this new number back to the library?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so, all right.
I think that's a good, we can pull it off.
If it's gonna be a major problem, I, I, we gotta, I gotta introduce.
The meeting's schedule is changed a little bit, so the meetings are, yeah, through the spring are a little bit closer to coming, so we'll be able to reschedule that.
But am I gonna be able to introduce this number?
The bid opening for the, for the R P, for the construction, for the state library grant is Thursday.
Yeah, but I'm talking about this number in the budget.
We need to do this for the budget now, to introduce the budget.
I need to, I, you know. Because once I introduce, I don't wanna make a major change.
If those, if those numbers are problematic for the library, Terry needs to know.
Well, I'll, we'll get those circulated and, um, and maybe we have a special meeting, but I think the meeting for April is moved up significantly.
So it's not. We're introducing it before. We're gonna have to have a sidebar.
Like, like, really, really, special meeting. All right.
Personally, I think the library should get as much as we can financially responsibly give them because they really do a lot for our underprivileged residents. Economic Development.
Uh, just the Main Street budget, is it really? Yeah, so, um, so, so, um, as you know, every year, the, the Main Street budget is funded through a business improvement district tax. Um, because the landlords and the business, um, most businesses on, on Raritan. The last time that that was increased was twenty eighteen. Um, the increase in twenty eighteen was about five percent, no, seven percent, seven percent. So over COVID, there was no increases, so, um, I think a, a small increase in the bid makes a lot of sense in the economic development. Elsie, Terry and I talked to a three percent increase in the bid, um, which is minimus for most landlords, it's not that much. But at the same time, one of the things that Main Street has taken on is to do a lot more, um, things with SNAP benefits and with, um,
The farmer's market.
Farmer's market benefits and making sure that people can use their, um, uh, use those in, in a variety of different places. And that's a lot of administrative work, um, that Rebecca and the staff have taken on. Um, it's not really a job for Main Street to do. They're doing it because they're the ones on the front lines. Um, so I would like us to contribute more, um, to the grant part of what we give them. We give them twenty-five thousand dollars a year, um, historically, and that's been flat forever as just a supplement to the, to the bid fund. I think if we increase that to thirty-five thousand, um, so we keep the, the, the bid tax at three percent, um.
I thought we, we were looking at a bid tax of two and a half percent.
Uh, I thought we had said, I thought we settled at three. I thought you did. I thought we went back and forth to the two and a half or three.
I thought we were at the two and a half with the increase. Look, you, continue, I'm sorry, I need to, I started.
Okay.
This is workshop.
Uh, so the difference between a two and a half and a three percent is, is.
Point five.
Actually, I was, oh, okay.
I didn't run that, unfortunately.
I'm gonna guess the best.
It's, it's the minimus. No, no, go ahead.
It's the minimus. It's, it's tiny. I, I, uh, uh, might as well. I thought we'd come out with three and ten, but, um.
This is workshop. This, this.
I mean, I, so, so, everybody is facing increased costs and Main Street is facing increased costs. And so I think that's, that's, I don't want those costs to be on our businesses as much, um, because they're still, still hurting. Um, but I think, I, I think a, a two and a half or three percent is, is, is acceptable. I, I'm, the most part, the part that I think makes the most sense is that since they are doing more in, in the SNAP stuff and then more in the, that, we should contribute to that. Because that's something that I think is a borough response.
It's about eight hundred and twenty-five dollars difference total.
Total. Oh, so.
Let's, let's not get crazy.
The difference between.
I was just sorry.
It's a part of the discussion.
I, I wasn't sure until.
But that'd be a Florida commission somewhere, eight hundred.
So that eight hundred and twenty-five dollar difference over what, how many?
But that's part of the special assessment. That's the amount to be raised in the special assessment.
That's like eight dollars in business is the difference between two point five and.
I'm not sure if that's true.
I don't know, something like that. Anyway, um, um, I, I, I would argue for three percent and ten, ten. I don't know, slightly. Anyway, I, I, I would argue for three percent and ten, ten.
So you're arguing for three and ten? I think with us not having a grocery store and with them doing as much as they are to make sure that our residents that have, don't have means to get to another store can get fresh fruits and vegetables and other necessities, I think that that's more than fair.
And I wholeheartedly second that statement.
But Terry, so I didn't know this about the SNAP stuff. We could have maybe did something with C D B G.
No, it's really the administrative, that's the, it's her time. It's, it's time that she, as I understand it, which is limited. The, because there's other programs that she uses to amplify SNAP benefits. So you shop there, you get, and you have this other thing that has a name.
I think it's Good Food.
Good food, but basically you get basically twenty extra dollars to spend while you're in the market.
You spend twenty and you get.
But that's not the money, the money she gets. It's the, all the reporting, all the overhead.
So, so that wouldn't, I, I don't know, so that wouldn't fit.
Wait, wait, wait.
Because I'm thinking, because those grants, that's how we normally like go with benefits loan.
In the future, I think we should think about, I think there's a larger discussion to be had about that kind of service provision and what the best way to do it is. But I don't know if C D B G is the right way because they're increasingly wanting to get us away from staff costs and more towards brick and mortar.
Projects.
Projects, so, but I think you, you noted a good point. We were not aware the amount of effort that goes into just offering, it's not just signing up one day and now your, your vendors are in. There's a lot of reporting and oversight that.
I thought vendors was accepting SNAP. That's just.
They coordinate that for the vendors.
They, they record that.
Yes, they do. Main Street is, Main Street actually does that.
And also with Main Street.
They sign the vendors up to, the vendors that will accept it, they have a record and they keep that database of who is accepting SNAP and sign those up, and then they match it with this other program called Good Food. So if you have every ten dollars become another ten, so you have twenty dollars. So they're working with those programs.
And vendors that don't take SNAP, you go to Main Street, you use your SNAP benefits for twenty dollars, you get forty dollars in tokens. And then you can use that.
It's a pass-through. It's a pass-through. Yes. The farmer's market, but it's a great way of seeing it.
You just can't use it for hot food.
Yeah, but these, so, so in my head, like when, because a lot, there's a lot of grants for like low to mod income stuff that we could probably, I, I didn't know. In my head, I thought it was just another form of payment that was there. And I, I didn't know that this is.
They had modified it to, to marry.
I don't know, I don't know if it makes the borough more, I don't know if it makes the borough more eligible for, for certain programs though, just because of our, anything, but I think New Street, I think, you know, the function that they, they have to do, they can.
We'll, we'll learn more about that and if there's a way we can help make that easier for them because I don't, you know, one could say, maybe that's not the best use of their time and maybe there's something we can do to help, you know, or something.
That admin, that admin, the day-to-day might not be the best top use of their time, but more of a publicity and going out recruiting and bringing more business in town.
I don't know what I don't know on that.
But it, it all needs to be explored.
But, but the, the point of raising it to ten grand is that right now she is doing the administrative work that causes the SNAP benefits to get spent, and we ought to contribute to that. How, whether the long, that makes sense in the long term, I hundred percent agree. Maybe that's not the best use of Main Street's time. I can think of other things.
But the fact is, it's being done.
Right now they're doing it, so we should pay. And they have the relationship with the vendors.
It can't stop, it has to.
Yeah.
And we should pay.
Agreed.
I mean, it's, it's more food security and I'm, I'm all about providing more food security for folks.
Yeah.
Yes. So, we're going with the three percent, huh? All right, so it's a three percent.
But let's say, let's say three percent with them exploring some grants.
And that's what I need to hear. That's exactly what I need to hear. We'll, we'll go with the ten K. We'll go in with the three percent with, the idea is that they're going to explore other opportunities. And we have to have a moving forward stance. How do we create press kits to go out and just sell downtown Highland Park?
Hundred percent.
Does, does Unity still give them that big donation?
They definitely get donations. I don't know how they.
They used to give them a big, they used to give them a big donation.
Yeah, I don't know, but I also now do a lot with the pantry and they do, you know.
Because, because of this low to mod thing, they get a lot. You have to do like C R A credit for the banks and stuff. So that's what I was saying, it's like different grants and stuff, maybe, I don't know. It's a long story, okay.
C R A credits, I'm gonna follow up with you on that.
I, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I'm.
Not to take you from whoever has food pantry.
I think Unity took some of the money they were giving to Main Street to give to the food pantry and to other avenues.
Because food pantry will give more credits to the banks. So that's, I give to food, we all give to food pantry.
Yeah, so I think that took some of Main Street's money.
Doing this stuff, that's why I asked, maybe that's why they like reallocated some, still giving it, but.
I'll follow up with you on that.
But.
But, okay, yeah.
Can I have my three percent?
Yes, you can have your three percent, geez. I'm a scrooge, but you know, I gotta watch the money.
I know you do. The three percent is where, where we are.
Okay, so it's three percent, to be clear, it's three percent with the ten K.
With a thirty, total of thirty-five.
Total of thirty-five because they're doing a lot of community outreach program and food safety and food security programs. But should that move away, then we take a stronger look?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
Okay, I'm good now. Anything else?
That's all I got.
I, I don't want to.
I'm not the only person. Stephanie used to watch the money so hard. Now I'm the one watching the money.
I don't, I don't want to just leave without, we do have a utility. I don't want to forget about that.
What is it?
Oh, yeah. Our utility.
Oh, was that today?
No, that's now.
Oh, oh, oh.
They're in there. It's not as complicated because the spending is pretty straightforward now. Now that we have our operation and maintenance contract, now that we have, so we basically revenue, expenses are as follows. We buy water, we run the system through our operations, and we pay to process our sewer. That's the large majority. And then the rest of the expenditures are all the things we have to do to keep things running from a day-to-day, including offsetting some of my time, Naraya's time, staff, program, software, things like that. So those are the expenses. On the revenue side, we did pass a increase. And what we did, because this year we're under, this was the preference of Lori at, at the time because we went with, remember what I said about anticipating revenues that you did? Because if the state looks at our numbers and we have, and then we say, well, how can you anticipate more revenue than you did last time? And we would have to say, we did this percent increase, blah, 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 blah. We can do that. And I've had to do that before when Renan was here. We had to basically show the state we could close this budget based on approved increases. But Lori's preference was, based on her experience, that it'll be adopted more smoothly. We did have enough surplus to cover the budget, knowing that we're going to regenerate it because we passed those increases. I think it was about nine and a half percent last year. So just so you know, I didn't, I didn't want anything to go, where's the revenue? We just approved. Like, we decided to kind of keep the budget simple for review purposes, which was anticipate what we could reasonably do based on prior year's performance. However, what's not reflected in prior year's performance is a full four quarters at nine and a half percent over. Given that we have such volatility, we decided it would be better to be a little more conservative in how we present this to the state. Not really trying to hide anything. It's just a way to go about it where she knows we will regenerate because we passed that increase last year. And we were, we just closed last year by the skin of our teeth because of that increase.
Oh, yeah.
Just to be really clear, so it was an absolutely essential.
That was the fourth quarter when we did that.
So I don't want to, but I wanted to be really clear why we did that. And if you were looking at the revenues going, where is it? That's, it's there. It's baked into the fact that we know we're going to regenerate the surplus, which we are going to need in order to do capital improvements and other things down the line. So those are the highlights. This is otherwise a very uneventful.
Budget.
Budget. The M C U A costs are, they estimate us every year for whatever reason. Thank you. It was only four percent over. We've had years where that wasn't the case. There's always, every first quarter of the following year is the makeup bill. So every year that can be different. Naraya knows we just paid the one from last year. It was down. I could give you a thousand theories as to why. One of the ones I like is some of the upgrades we're making and some of the timely response to leaks and things like that are cutting off some of the costs because what goes out of our pipes in the ground as clean water often finds its way back into the cracks in the sewer pipes, which then goes to the M C U A for processing. And that's called infiltration, and it's bad, and we're working on it. And there's going to be much more to talk about in terms of capital programming. But that's, that's this budget. It's, I think, pretty much is what it is. I don't think there's, hopefully you don't see a lot of holes in it because I think it's pretty straightforward. It's not, it's not fluff. It's what we need to run the utility responsibly.
Are, are we anticipating another increase?
Not this year. I don't, this budget does not rely on it. If we have a disaster and for some reason, I don't think so because I do think we have lost revenue on these meters and we're in the process of doing meters. So a combination of the increase you already passed and hopefully more accurate billings will mean we're stable for a little bit.
So everybody that receives that meter replacement, that most likely not, you're not looking.
It's not a hundred percent, but what we know is not uncommon. It's not light years wrong, but the outs, on the older places where you have a remote on the outside of your house and you have a meter on, in the basement, when we come and do a routine exchange, just someone, for some reason, they, they were reading zero on the outside and then we realized, okay, the remote's down. We go in and there's usage on the actual meter that wasn't billed because that remote reading was slowing down over time, which your, your systems aren't going to pick up. Sometimes they just stop and then we notice because we go, why did this guy go from three thousand cubic feet to zero and would go back?
Nobody, they'll come knocking at your door when they.
So, so the bottom line is, we will be, it is our hope that we'll have more accurate billings. That will be, people are paying, getting, we're getting, we're getting paid for what they're using. It's no more, no less. And that's what we want. We want, we don't want to bill people for stuff they're not using and we want to bill them for what they are because we're all footing this bill to purchase water. And so that's, that's a real cost. So that's all there is, the, the, you know, I, I, my hope is that was enough of an increase that we, we're good for a little bit as we stabilize. And we're trying to pick and choose some of the capital projects to address leaks or problems with I N I, you know, give them as much priority as we can. All right? And then the last sheet I sent you guys, and I, we don't usually talk a whole lot about it and I don't, we have to, it's kind of our, it's a capital plan, which is based largely on where the department heads are telling me they're seeing things and where I'm seeing things. So we don't have to go through this blow-by-blow, but it includes, you know, a community center roof. We've been talking about that. You gotta put it in your plan. If you don't, you have to, when you go to do a capital program and it's not in here, there's a whole.
No, we've been talking about that forever.
You know, with the, when, if you don't put something in your capital plan and then you need the money, you need to do an ordinance, I think you have to amend your capital plan as part of that. It's like a whole rigmarole. So this is a best guess wish list of what, you will have to authorize any of these expenditures via ordinances. So it's not by any means a blank check you're writing to me or anybody other than the departments, but it is at least a statement of the fact that there is a cost ongoing basis of upkeep and maintenance that we have to try to stay ahead of.
The thing I liked about the capital plan is it's front-loaded in the first year. We're having some budget here right now. It's a little less going out from that.
Right. In part, that's because I know more about what emergencies are right now.
Now, now.
Now is a time for us to.
I'm not going to make it that, but it's going to be perfect.
It's going to be something and you know, there's certain things that are routines that, we know vehicles turn over. So we know that's something we gotta just plan on. But other stuff, hopefully, you know, we got a new library situation going on. We have some other things. So we did the track in the turn field. That's a big one that's not on this list anymore. So, you know, eventually we, we, we check these things off. Obviously, we have to decide if we can afford it, if we have enough cash, or if we have to borrow. We'll have to make those decisions as we go. Maybe we can get some other funding, you know, we put in some requests for the roof, put in some requests for some other things. So we'll certainly wait till those, see how they pan out before we pull the trigger.
I see the, the police department too. They have some facility upgrades there randomly.
No, I think the command center is a big thing that they have.
You mean an incident command center?
Are you talking about the nine-one-one system?
No, under police, oh, but that's twenty twenty-five.
I pushed it off because I, and I honestly don't know exactly what that is. And so I, I don't remember. I know that she told me, but I just honestly.
Oh, okay, that's true.
I pushed it off.
Okay.
But the nine-one-one, for example, that's, is, is going to be something real. That's a, no way. This nine-one-one.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we had the conversation.
There's certain, new mandates coming out, new systems that have to be.
Yeah, they're actually going into place already. It's a change to, change in frequencies. It's mandated for all dispatch. They were allowed to phase it in over a certain amount of time. But it has to be done. And the system that departments all over the state are finding works is of course the more expensive one.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, I was going over it with the chief in our meeting, you know, he was saying it's a mandate. There are ways to do it, but it's a mandate.
Well, of course. Wait, you're telling me that the state puts funds on us?
They put these rules.
We have to pay for it? And they don't tell us about it?
So, so again, like things like the fire engine, we have another iron in the fire with the donation. But we're going to need to buy, I just don't, so let's look at the number. Let's hope we find another way to fund it besides borrowing, but we'll just have to see what we can do. I mean, there's no two ways about it. Very expensive. And ours are old.
Yep, they are.
Thirty years.
Twenty something.
Well, yeah, the problem, the problem with the Jesus, they don't, they won't, they, they last, but their little things break, and the little things cost a lot of money.
Is there any other discussion?
No, I mean, I guess really, Phil, I want to work with you. The main outstanding thing is the library. I just want to make sure, because if this is okay, then I can, we can actually.
We, we're, I already talked a little bit, we're, we're going to set something up.
Yeah, I, I think this should be fine. I really looked at the number and tried to be there.
I believe that it is. We had general discussions about the budget. I did tell them, I say.
I think they knew that was a huge lift for us in one year.
Because Sherry was very aware.
The other thing is, because the hiring's taking a while, they'll have, they've been not paying an executive director pretty much for half of the year. So they'll have a cushion in a couple places beyond what I even already identified. So that's why I feel this is very reasonable.
And again, you have a huge, yeah, the construction projects you have and the Kushner grant are more than the combined borough, third mill, and contribution in one, in one school. There's going to be a lot of crossover in that, and I think we're going to benefit in that. But we're going to have to really.
Yeah, yeah. So that's my only, because otherwise what we'll, we'll do is we'll, we'll put these numbers into the official budget documents that the state will be on, and I'll prepare my little dog and pony PowerPoint for introduction.
We were already working on that even before this meeting.
One, just on the PowerPoint, your taxes are going down seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Number what?
To put that down.
And, uh, thank you very much.
And now, and now it's talking about.
Average micro have taxed down.
Your taxes are going down.
I'll put your two percent.
Now it's all about the, your taxes are going down.
Yeah, so, so agreed, but, but I just, we'll be introducing, if, you know, basically utilizing what we all talked about here. I, there were, we didn't really, we, we didn't take, make any changes, you know, here. And we'll be putting the materials together for introduction and you'll have, you know, it'll be in your packets and all that stuff. And I'll do the PowerPoint and hopefully peppered with questions all night long, but no, I'm sorry. But, but April fourth.
Excellent.
All right.
Move for the meeting to be adjourned?
It's a move.
Second. Any public discussion before?
Oh, yeah, we have.
Any public discussion? Hold on. See that there's not move for the meeting to be adjourned? First, second.
Thank you.
Thanks.